Meeting to order on December, or November the 12th at 9:00, 2020. Lander County Courthouse Commissioners and the Austin Courthouse Commission Office and the, what else? Lander County Commissioners.
Ms. President, is Austin on the phone?
Yeah, is Austin there?
(noise)
Okay. Okay, let's stand for the pledge. Brian, will you lead us on this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have a moment of silence now. Thank you. Lander County Commissioners may break lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you. I did have an ACO, sorry, I did have an ACO meeting on October 23rd. One of the things that came up was the Legislative Interim Finance Committee met in October, and they actually gave approval to the transfer of some of the indigent accident funds and gave additional dollars to the counties. This helps for our match, actually. We have to do an assessment match for our long-term care. And so they are going to open up some dollars for us there, and that's good. We did have a presentation from the Utah State Representative Ken Ivory on PILT, and what's going on with that. And again, it's the same thing that we had reported on. Previously, we've been watching it closely of them trying to get a new way to figure the PILT dollars that were a bit more fair to the different counties.
This conference will now be recorded.
The other thing is getting ready for our annual meeting, which of course will be virtual and different this year again. And that starts on Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 17th. So if you're not registered, please do so, so you can pick up some of those excellent workshops. On November 2nd, I did have a Chamber of Commerce meeting. They also had an annual meeting and did an election of officers. The interesting thing coming up, of course, is our tree lighting, and we do have that actually on the agenda, so we'll talk about that a little bit further. And the other exciting news was Travel Nevada had some CARES money, and the chamber put in for it for advertising, and they actually were awarded a little over $20,000. But it's just for advertising, and it has to deal around something we've never, it wasn't on our budget, we weren't planning it, and it has to refer to the safety precautions and such. So we have to spend it by the end of December, but they will be doing that, so that's exciting. And on November 9th, I did have an Austin Airport Board meeting. One of the things, of course, was our representative on our Project Adviser's Committee for the state, and that's also on the agenda. And then we were looking at our fuel sales, and actually, we just get a report from Walt Quarterly, and July was so-so, August, we did really, really well. And then September, we only had a couple, but unfortunately, we had some problems with our credit card machine, and that's why we couldn't get it fixed in time. And so we really lost a lot of sales over that. We had people stopping and calling us going, "Well, I guess I could make it to Battle Mountain if I went back." It was like, "Well, we're so sorry," but those things happen. And that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, I'm almost out of meeting, but there was no warrant for Pollock. Right?
No report.
Okay.
And I think we have Judy on the phone with this too.
Judy, you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Do you have a report?
I don't, thank you.
Okay. Public comment for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item or board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board, responsible restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, manner, but public comment based on viewpoint may not be restricted. Is there any public comment? No public comment?
Unmuted.
Consent agenda?
Unmuted.
Hey, Art, this is Judy. Art?
Yes.
Um, did you forget staff reports? Does Bert have anything to report?
Oh, right. Staff reports. Bert?
Yes, Bert, aim us for the record, so I hope everyone had a good Veterans Day yesterday, and we thank all of our vets. For our COVID numbers, as of today, we have 131 cases, 108 that have recovered, and 19 active. So our active numbers have increased, and they've kind of been staying steady between 15 and 19 for the last couple of weeks, but hopefully that, hopefully that tapers off for us. I have to apologize for Ms. Ancho not being here today. We'd put out, my office had put out a reminder of meetings, and we had misprinted the date on there for the 13th for this meeting, and I apologize for that. But we are putting calendars in every Commissioner's box for all the meetings throughout the month. From here forward, you guys should be getting them calendars in your box the first of the month, so you guys know every meeting that's going on, when they're going on, and we will get the numbers and dates right.
We didn't change anything right from when we decided these dates.
No. And then I would like to point out that AM Engineering has put a donation tree out front. They are donating $5,000 to needy families in Lander County. So if anybody knows anybody that may be coming on some tough times due to this COVID, or, you know, they do, if somebody needs to move out of their house and move into another home, they will bring their trucks and trailers over and help with these kind of things. So if anybody knows of anything, put a little note on there, write it down, and drop it in the box. And before Christmas, they're going to come out and try to help some needy families in Lander County. So I think that that was a kind thing. They're doing it in Elko, Lander, and I believe in Humboldt as well. So...
And then who's A and M?
AM Engineering. Aaron Martinez.
What is it? Oh, Aaron Martinez.
Yes. So that is out front in the commons, and everything else I have should be on the agenda.
Make sure he gets a nice thank you card from Lander County, all the Commissioners will sign.
Most certainly.
Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda now. Any other staff? Anna? Okay. All matters listed on our consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available to Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available at a nominal charge. Approval of November 12th, 2020 Agenda Notice. Approval of May 7th, 2020 Special Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Approval of May 14th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Approval of May 19th, 2020 Special Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Approval of July 23rd, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Approval of August 13th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Approval of August 27th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Approval of September 10th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Approval of September 24th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Approval of October 8th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Approval of October 22nd, 2020 Meetings. And approval of payroll change requests. What do we need to pull out, Patsy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to pull up, number one, the approval of the Agenda Notice. I did receive the minutes on number four, which is May 19th, and the payroll change request. So I make a motion that we approve number four, the May 19th Special Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes, and number 11, the approval of payroll change requests.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Judy votes aye.
Aye.
Thank you. On number one, I just wanted it noted for the record, because we did have a holiday. And on the very back, when we, when we actually write down when we are posting it, it did say the 9th day of November, which was Monday. But we need three business days, and because of the holiday, we did make sure it was posted on time. So I wanted that noted in the record. It was posted on the 4th day of November, and that was subscribed, as sworn, and it is on the agenda. So with that amendment, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Commissioners, for possible action to approve or disapprove the payment of bills. I got to pull 209-658 for myself.
Okay, actually, there's a couple we need to pull. I have checks number 209-512, 209-688. And Brian, for under Point S, has 209-515 and 209-607. So with yours, Art, 209-658. I make a motion, we approve all the bills minus those five checks.
I'll second. Vote for ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, with that, I make a motion, we approve the Point S checks for 209-515 and 209-607.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Judy votes aye.
And I will abstain.
Okay.
Thank you. And then I'll make a motion, we approve Commissioner Clark's check, 209-658.
I abstain.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Judy votes aye.
Okay. For possible action to approve...
No, no, I still have my checks.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Patsy. Brian will have to...
What was the check number?
209-512 and 209-688.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve checks number 209-512 and check number 209-688.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, for possible action to approve, disapprove negotiations for settlement case involving employee number 1401. We going to have a litigation on this?
On number two?
Number two.
Yes, I would like to, to have a litigation meeting in Bert's office at this time.
Okay, at this time, we're going to close the meeting.
We're going to call up Becky Peru and put her on the phone, and then her and I will discuss with them.
You want to do it in here, or you want to...
In there, so we can call.
We're going to go into litigation, so you guys can stay out here. We're going back there.
You want to recess?
Unmuted.
We're going to recess the meeting for a litigation. Matthew, are you there? Judy, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Austin?
Yeah, Austin's online with us.
Okay. Austin, you there? You hear us?
I'm here. Sorry, my phone stopped. Putting it on.
Okay. We're going to go to number two. Commissioners, for possible action, approve, disapprove negotiation for settlement case involving employee number 1401. We had our litigation meeting. I'll entertain motions.
I'll make a motion that we approve the negotiated settlement for case involving employee 1401.
And authorize?
And authorize the Co-Chair to sign.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion passes. Number three, for Commissioners, for possible action to appoint a person to perform duties as a representative of Lander County Board Commissioners to serve on a member of Project Advisory Committee, PAC.
Thank you. Actually, we received this information from Kurt Huckall, which is our representative, of course, in the state regarding the, our airports. And they had already invited JUB to be part of it, and of course, there are airport engineers. And David said he'd be happy to be our representative also, and that Kurt said he could do that in that capacity. Or we could appoint, we could appoint somebody from the county. This went before the Airport Advisory Board for their recommendation. They, they said they were fine with David if he would represent us. I have a concern that, I think it's an excellent tool to be able to, to have our, our advocate there at the meetings, and I would love to see us appoint someone else in addition to David. And when I, I've been trying to think of somebody that might, we've asked a couple of different people, and I know you're really busy, but you're our airport manager, Bert, and, and I would love to see you take part in this. And I think you certainly know enough about our airports to be informational, and I think it also would be quite a learning experience. But I really think you'd be a good advocate if you might do something like that.
You bet. I spoke with David, and he, he kind of agrees with the same train of thought as you, that there needs to be somebody else from the county or appointed to assist with him. And I don't mind doing that.
Okay, with that, thank you. I will make a motion that we have our county manager, who is also our airport manager, represent us on the PAC.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Judy votes aye.
Motion passes. Bert is the man. Okay, for possible action, Agenda Item Number One, for possible action, approval or disapproval lifting the current burn ban within Lander County. Ron?
Number four?
Yeah.
Did you get something else there?
No, I thought you said number one.
Oh, no, number four.
Ron, for the record, I asked for this to be put on the agenda for the fact that, number one, we're in our winter season. This does just involve pretty much a county properties. And BLM, the Forest Service, has lifted their ban a month or so ago. So I think it's time that these people, well, they're going to burn some weeds, maybe there's going to be a little smoke, but...
We need a motion?
I'll make a motion, we lift the current burn ban within Lander County.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Brian made it. Judy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ron. Was getting a little scary there until we got this snow. Okay, Agenda Item Number Five, requested action of the Lander County Commission is for possible action, approve, disapprove the purchasing of a security system for the Battle Mountain Recreation Center. If approved, this Board must agree to one of the following proposals. Security system for access control systems only, the doors. Security system with cameras only, or three, security system with access control, doors, and cameras recommended by the building official and recreation supervisor. Good morning, Sean. Good morning, Adam.
Good morning.
Sean Baker for the record.
Anna Panola.
Where we going with this, guys?
We're wanting to do the same system that we have for the courthouse as over at the rec center, and it's going to be the same system tied into the master system here.
I have a couple of questions on it. One is, under our budget, if we do it like right now, or do we have to wait for a budget year, or where are we on that?
There's money in the budget for this system.
Okay, then my other question is, one in there, I saw it referred to monthly service charges.
We're not doing that.
Okay, so it would just be the amounts that we have in our backup. Okay, in there it says something about the users actually could, could have access to both, both places. Like you said, you want everything compatible?
Yes.
Would that mean that anybody has a key to the rec center can come in here?
No.
No, what?
What's, what's the compatible part, I guess?
It's to view, to view the cameras.
Oh, not the keys?
Not the keys.
Oh, because when it said access, I thought, oh, does that mean?
They're not going to be the same, it's going to be the same key system, but it's going to be configured just for them.
Okay.
Yeah, our key to get in here won't go as in there.
Correct. Correct.
The physical key or the magnetic key.
Correct.
As long as we're going to go to this expense, I, I can see the advantages of, of having both, for sure, especially the security cameras. And I know you want the doors, because that becomes first. But I think having even the security cameras, like some would be outside, would be a good thing, too. So I, I like that idea.
The cameras actually go all the way around the building outside, too. So the park, the statue in the park, it will be on that, just in case there's vandalism in the park. But also, the county manager and the building official will have access to the cameras over there. I won't have access to the cameras in this building, but they will have access to see the cameras over there.
Okay, I'm going to get on my stump here, and I did when I was on the school board. I really think that somehow we need to coordinate dispatch at the sheriff's office.
Yes, that's part of the system as well.
I mean, if we have a screen with the courthouse, the rec center, and all the schools there, if there's an issue, SO's got, they're on the inside.
Yes.
So that's, that's very encouraging.
And down the road, every county building will have this system. That's the plan.
Yeah, that's, that, that's protection. Any more discussion? Judy?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion?
Brian, did you have any input on that?
What's that? Any input?
Nope.
Okay.
I agree. I like the third option.
Okay, I will make a motion that we go with number three, the security system with access control systems for the doors and cameras.
I'll second it.
Do we need an amount in there, or do we need an amount in our motion?
It wouldn't hurt. Let me, let me get...
They're in the...
Not exceed...
Okay, so, so we're using, this is the 131, right?
Right.
Okay. And we will be going with Stanley Security, not to exceed $131,024.84.
I'll second. Okay. Motion, Patsy made. Brian seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Judy votes aye.
Aye. Patsy voted. Okay. Motion passes.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you very...
Number six. Number six, for possible action to approve, disapprove the request of the D District Attorney to declare a critical labor shortage pursuant to NRS 286.523 for the position of Chief Deputy District Attorney. Good morning, Mr. Chief Deputy District Attorney.
Good morning, Commissioner Park. And the other commissioners. So what we're asking for is, this is something that needs to be...
Can we put that on speaker, please? I can't hear.
What we're asking for is, this is required every two years, and we're asking that the county Commissioners declare a critical labor shortage. And you'll see in, in the packet that we made the required ads and publications. In fact, they're still being published. And we would ask that county Commissioners, again, declare a critical labor shortage so that I can retain the services of Mr. Forgeron as my chief deputy. If you don't do this, then he, he does the work for almost two deputies, so I would, I would be required to hire two deputies to do the same job that Mr. Forgeron or I are doing together right now. So...
If we hired new people, we'd have to pay purse, correct?
Right. We're not paying purse for Mr. Forgeron, because under the critical labor shortage laws, that we don't have to do that. So we're getting him at a special deal. And we're saving another, another position. So I would, I would ask you guys to do this for me. Thank you.
Any discussion?
I will make a motion that we approve the request of the District Attorney to declare a critical labor shortage pursuant to NRS 286.523 for the position of the Lander County Chief Deputy District Attorney. And our backup material shows that we have done the proper advertising and such. And so that's my motion, and we're delighted that you're here. I don't know what we do. So thank you. Hi.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Judy votes aye.
Pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Forgeron.
Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to working with you for two more years.
Thank you.
Thank you tremendously.
And then two more years after that.
Now I'm going to do it only.
Good luck.
All year long.
Agenda Item Number Seven, for possible action to approve, disapprove Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce Parade of Lights to be held on December 5th, 2020, which route includes starting at 6:00 PM at 6:50 Altenberg Ave, turning left on Sonoma Street, left on Front Street, left on Broad Street, right on Broyles Ranch Road, right on Palmer Street, right on Humboldt, then into Sixth Street, and ending at the Civic Center, 6255 Broad Street. The Commission must approve, disapprove the signing of the agency's checkoff and notification list for temporary right-of-way occupancy permit applications submitted to the Nevada Department of Transportation, and to approve or disapprove the parade of lights to proceed on the Lander County roads as outlined above.
So if anybody wants to know where to stand and watch the parade, all they have to do is read Agenda Item Number Seven.
Yeah, I would need a map. It's in there.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce Parade of Lights to be held on December 5th, 2020, with the wealth outlined in the Agenda Item. And approve signing the agency's checkoff and notification list for temporary right-of-way occupancy permit application to be submitted to the Nevada Department of Transportation.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion, Judy?
Yeah, she, yeah, she started out a motion.
No, it's not required. She's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
She's doing a good job.
And it has been approved by MHP and the Sheriff, yes.
Okay. It's just, it's hard to hear.
Would you like to say something?
That's it. I mean, I'm super detailed in that.
Okay, good. I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 See how easy that was, Felicia?
And thank you very, very much for, for doing this. Okay, Agenda Item Number Eight, for possible action, approve, disapprove the Austin Chamber of Commerce to purchase four fire pits and four gas cylinders for the town of Austin.
Okay, let me bring you up to date on this one, because we are, we got that beautiful tree last year, but it came so close to Christmas that we just put it up, and we didn't have any celebration. So this year, the Chamber of Commerce said we are going to have our hallmark moment, and we are going to have a tree lighting ceremony with the smores, and we're putting those all in kits, so they will all be handed out. We don't have to be doing anything with the food or anything after, after they, they come in. But I will tell you that we don't need any action on this, because Ormat stepped up and bought us three fire pits and three of the gas heaters. And we're, we're truly excited about that. Our manager said that, that we also have some extra gas cylinders and such, too, that we can use on that. And we do have the food that we are, have been authorized to use from the, the gold mine in Hadley. So it is exciting. We invite you all. It is the day after Thanksgiving on Friday at 5:00 PM. And we are excited about the fire pits and the gas heaters, because we're going to be able to use those also for the nativity that's coming up, and we'll be using them for years on and on. So thank you all, but I just wanted that's coming up, and we'll be using them for years on and on, so thank you all, but just wanted to let you know, and no action required.
Well, is three enough?
Pardon?
Is three enough? You asked for four.
No, three is fine.
Three's fine?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a nice thing. I'd like to point out one thing, is, you know, if we're doing something like this, I just, I seen in our backup that the stuff was quoted from out of town. I'd like to see if we, you know, we do buy these things as a county that we support our own, now, not Elko or things like that. I just wanted to comment on that.
Okay, move on to...
So point out for the merger chairman that this matter is tabled, that you tabled number eight.
So we're gonna distable number...
Yes.
Okay, disable number eight, since with Patsy's report.
Yeah, no action required.
No action required. We go on to number nine, for possible action to approve, disapprove a parcel map application for Anderson, Wollin, and Associates, Maverick Inc. to combine two parcels in one location at 775 and 759 Broad Street, Battle Mountain, APN 002-200-64, and 002-200-65. This was approved by the planning commission on October 21st, 2020, with the following conditions: Taxes are to be paid in full on parcel 002-200-64, and de-transferring parcel 002-200-64 needs to be recorded before chairman's signature is affixed to the map. This is the Maverick to the north side?
Yes.
It used to be the orange front, now it's the double B. You guys sold that?
Right.
So this will hopefully alleviate the...
The congestion.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and it may actually work.
Yeah, Kyla, sharp for the record, they do plan on bringing it in their plot plan to reverse the flow of traffic, is one of the ideas that they've come up with as well, to bring it into Palmer's.
Through the backside and then out, rather than through Broad Street and then onto where they're going, so I think this expansion, there's a couple of different ideas they have.
Have the conditions been met yet?
So the taxes have been paid, however, I do not believe that the deed transferring it from the one owner has been recorded yet. Doesn't mean that they're not in works on it, but it has not been recorded yet.
So the buyer records that?
Um, it doesn't matter who records it, it's just a matter of the paperwork getting done and it getting turned in to the recorder's office.
Yeah, just needs to be recorded before our chair signs or vice chair.
We need a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the parcel map application for Anderson, Wollin, and Associates/Maverick Incorporated to combine the two parcels into one located at 775 and 759 Broad Street in Battle Mountain, APN 002-200-64, and 002-200-65. This has been approved by the planning commission. It's approved with the condition that it will be recorded before our chairman or vice chairman's signature is affixed.
I'll second.
Motion's been made. Seconded. Vote. Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Judy votes aye.
Unanimous. Motion passes. Agenda item 10, for possible action and approval, disapproval, a parcel map application for Dennis and Michelle Newland family trust to combine two lots into one located at 102 and 122 Seventeenth Street, APN 002-426-15, and 002-426-16, Zoned R1. This is approved by the planning commission, October 21st, 2020, without conditions, so this is hooked up to sewer.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh-huh. Municipal, we've checked all the setbacks. There are two homes on there. Combining the two lots should not cause any issues. They just want to build a shop over the line, and they, we made sure that all the setbacks would be met before we moved forward with the map.
Any discussion? We need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the parcel map application for Dennis and Michelle Newland Family Trust to combine two lots into one located at 102 and 122 Seventeenth Street, APN 002-426-15, and 002-426-16, Zoned R1 in Battle Mountain. This has been approved by the planning commission, and we authorize the chair to sign, is it the miler?
Yes.
Okay, authorize the chair or vice chair to sign the miler.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion. We have a second. Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Judy?
Judy votes aye.
Judy votes aye?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Bring that up after the meeting, and I'll sign it if you have it. Okay. Okay, item 11, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the preventive maintenance agreement between Lander County and Hilltop Refrigeration, contract lasting from November 1st, 2020 to October 31st, 2022.
Hi, Anna. I see, so Hilltop Refrigeration, and they're out of Sparks, Nevada, did we advertise for this contract?
They're the only ones that would...
They're the only ones applied, but did we notice, I mean, did we advertise that we're looking for somebody to fill this position? That was my question.
I can't hardly get anybody to come to Austin. These guys come to Austin anytime I call.
So this is more for Austin?
Yes, yes, strictly for Austin.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
The contract, the agenda request actually says no, in here, the agenda request form, that there was no increase in price. Can remain same price as initial contract, no increase. Okay. I just wanted to be sure, 'cause you looked at the contract and everything, and I thought, great, if there's no increase, that's good. I will make a motion to approve the preventive maintenance agreement between Lander County and Hilltop Refrigeration. Contract goes from November 1st, 2020 to October 31st, 2022, and authorize...
We have a motion. You're the second?
And authorize I chair or vice chair to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been seconded. Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Judy votes aye.
Okay, passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, agenda number 12, and we don't have one, correspondence reports, future agenda items. Bertolo?
No correspondence at all?
Not that I'm aware of. We will have the 2477 roads on. We're still doing some research, and what else do we have there? Some, we'll probably put them back on one of these upcoming agendas for the Austin Town Boundary Alignment, and if you guys, hopefully we have time to get something back from the gentleman who's doing the review on the levee, so we can put that in front of you as well.
There's one thing I was talking to Bert about, and I'm just putting it out there now. I told him I'd like to address it after the first year, but maybe Ted maybe might enlighten me if it's something that is possible, Art, as a fellow sportsman. I mean, I've been hunting these Lander County area for, since I was a kid, and you've spent a lot of time out there, and it's just, this year was extremely depressing on the amount of deer that we've seen out there, not even just deer, just wildlife in general, and I just, I wanted to know, does, do we as a Board of County Commissioners have any authority over the management of our own wildlife within our boundaries? I mean, it's like, you know, I just, I have my opinions on this matter, and I just, that's what I want to know, because I'd like to possibly address some things if we can.
I think one thing that would really help is coyote abatement, and if you talk to Bert, he can give you some information on what's happened in the last couple of years with deer.
Well, that's one thing I had talked to Bert about, was, and let me know if I'm getting off topic, I'm just, this is for future agenda item, is that, like, we can't spotlight within Lander County, and I know if that, if we were able to do that, there'd probably be a lot more predators being killed. I know Humboldt County, they don't have an ordinance prohibiting it, but we do within Lander, you know, Lander County.
Hey, Brian?
Yes?
And Sean Thunder can maybe touch on this. Actually, I've read the ordinances. I don't believe we have an ordinance. It says we can't spotlight, but there is an ordinance stating that you cannot discharge a firearm after dark.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, you know, spotlighting is a moot point, because if you can't discharge a firearm after dark, then why, you can spotlight, you just can't shoot them.
Right.
Yeah, and I think it stems from an incident many, many, many years ago, we know about, in Mill Creek, and I would hope that if we visit this, that the sportsmen nowadays, especially with the equipment that they have, won't have these issues.
Right, and then that was one of the ideas I looked at. Another one, I'm just putting it there, was, would we have any sort of power to put a moratorium on the killing of does?
No, we wouldn't.
We couldn't do that within our...
Department of Wildlife, yeah, they handle all of that.
No, we don't have any authority or jurisdiction except to make comments to them, but as far as any ordinances, the sheriff and I can get together.
But we could formulate a letter.
And look at revamping some of those.
Could we formulate a letter from the commissioners and have them sign it and send it in?
Sportsmen, I mean, it's just, honestly, I mean, you know, where do you know?
Because we can't be discussing this now.
Well, we're not gonna take any action. I'm just saying, that's a possibility.
Yeah.
I'm just looking, I'm just putting this discussion there for a future agenda item.
I know, but we are really discussing, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Ron, for the record, I think, you might correct me if I'm wrong, but Lander County does have a committee that is like liaison to the Endow. And they're the ones that, I know they've met at the fire hall occasionally, and I sat in on them. They're the ones that kind of helped Endow set the number of tags that's gonna be issued, so there is a voice in Lander County, and it's with that county commissioners for fish and game, if you want to call it that.
But that's where it stops.
So there's where you need to start, I think, is from them.
It's the Wildlife Advisory Board, and I think we elect people to that during the election, don't we?
Well, they used to, they used to call them Fish and Game Commissioners, county commissioners is what they were called.
This is Judy, and we do appoint the members, and I think right now Scott Torgeson is the chairman, so if you wanted to get ahold of Scott, then invite him to the commission.
But, yeah, I just...
Judy's correct on that, and they've got quite a committee, but I think that, Brian, that's where we need to start, and then let them know how this commission feels, 'cause I agree with Brian.
Yeah, I agree with Brian.
I'd like to point out for the next, when we do put this on the agenda, that I will do some more research, 'cause I know, I believe Jim Bowman, I believe is the gentleman in Eureka County, who they had put a moratorium in Eureka County on within their boundaries, so I will do some more research, and we'll bring this back before the commission, when we have it as an agenda item.
Now, I will tell you this, we haven't had SLU meetings for a while, but there was one plan out there, no elk above Highway 50. That was one of the plans that was floated for a few years. I thought that was just absolutely ridiculous, but that has been spoken, too, because of the amount of elk in the area and how hard they are on the forest, so we have that out there, too.
Mustangs.
Oh, amen.
That's your problem.
I just think the agenda item will open a lot of discussion, and I don't know, I guess that's the place to start, so...
I did have some correspondence, back and forth communication with Nicholas Ivory. He's a Trump campaign guy in Washington, DC, and they said it's not over, so we'll see.
Were you in public comment?
Yeah. Okay, we have a public comment?
I know, I thought that was your public comment.
Yeah, that's my public comment, okay. Public comment for non-agendaized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend or make comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any. Discussion of those comments, at the discretion of the board, all public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, manner, upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Any public comment? I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Another record?
Judy votes aye. This conference is no longer being...